Of the Planning Commission and Subdivision Committee meeting. Can we have the roll call?
Chair Andrew, asset, Vice Chair DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Polley.
Here.
Commissioner Rowe.
Here.
Commissioner Lowe.
Here.
Commissioner Riley. Asset. Commissioner Self-Vacanick.
Here.
Okay, will you stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll invite any individual in the audience that wants to address the Planning Commission on any item that's in our subject matter jurisdiction. If you wish to speak on an item that's on the agenda, feel free to speak now, otherwise it might be better to speak at the time the agenda comes up. All remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes. So is there anybody who wishes to come forward and speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 22nd.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Own favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Consent calendar, we have none. First item, item 7A, public hearing regarding the five-unit residential condominium development at 4071 Farquhar. Can we have a, start with the staff report.
Vice Chair DeBolt and members of the Planning Commission. As commissioners, you might have noticed that the first three items tonight are similar in number of units and architecture. You can see where they're located in relationship to each other. Two are on the right side there, they're right next to each other, and then the third one is down the street. And the projects are very similar. It's kind of very repetitive, so there are little tiny changes between them, but that's how that is. And the first item of consideration is a five-unit residential condominium application. As proposed, tentative track map 1602, conditional use permit 1616, and site plan review 1607 are at 4071 Farquhar Avenue. Move that forward. Must be dead suddenly. There we go. Okay, the applicants are here with, or one of the applicants is here with us tonight on this one. It's Eddie Keskey and his wife Dawn as the other applicant on this. The project would involve demolishing three existing units and the construction of five units. This project will mirror a simultaneous project to the west side of this project at 4061. That'll be coming up. And this project is a residential development plan which requires a site plan review. This is five units and three buildings. That's the existing property there. Let me get to the site plan there. Okay. The units range in size from 1,620 to 1,978 square feet. Four units will be three-bedroom and one unit will be four-bedroom. All structures will be three stories in height, and each unit will have a private two-car garage. The property owner will dedicate two and a half feet of the northern part of the parcel to the alley, which is for today's larger trash trucks. And this project will have 13 parking spaces total, five in two-car garages, and three in the open areas. Vehicle access will be provided along the alley. So, confused where I'm at. Yeah, over here, and go along this, wait, sorry, over there, and go along that side. All right. The architectural style displays modern kind of architecture with multiple planes that step in and out. And there's a stucco fascia at varied heights on the parapet and vertical inset covered with wood grain tiles. All the proposed buildings will include additional enhanced architectural elements on all sides of the buildings. The zoning code requires the applicant to maintain a minimum 15 percent of the site in landscaped areas, and this project has 20 percent. The condominiums also require a conditional use permit. This project complies with the development standards of the district and additional requirements set forth for condominiums, such as personal outdoor space and personal storage in the units. The conditions also require that the applicant will prepare a document called CCNRs, which are covenants, conditions, and restrictions. And they will, that provides the operating instructions for the homeowners' association, basically is what that does. And a tentative track map is also required because this will be as if the parcel split up, but actually it's air rights for each unit. If the project is approved by the Planning Commission tonight, the Planning Commission is also sitting as the subdivision committee for the tentative track map. And then staff supports approval of conditional use permits 1616, site plan review 1607, and tentative track map 1602 due to what appears to be exceptional layout and design of the project. So it'd be a good time to open the comments for the public.
Okay, I'll open the meeting to the public. We have a public comment right now, so if anybody wishing to speak to this item, if you come forward and give us your name and...
All right. Good evening, Council. My name is Eddie Keskey. I'm the owner of 4071 Farquhar. My goal here is to beautify the, another part of the city. My building that's there now needs some help, it needs some work. The easy way for me is to go ahead and just put a Band-Aid on it, but I've owned it for a long time. I'd like to see the old stuff become new and beautify the city. It's across the street from Cottonwood Park, which I think would add a really nice enhancement to the, from the park. You'll be looking straight at the two building, bookend buildings. Because of the way they're situated, there's a wide-open space as you look at them. And also by, we're adding probably at least two, two and a half, maybe three spaces of public parking in the front by closing the two driveways in the street. And again, just, you know, it's a property I've had for a long time. I want to, I need to do some work on it, and I'm trying to complete my portfolio for my retirement, so that's part of it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to make sure that you know that the architect is in the audience, Ron Wistrum, if you have any specific questions from the architect.
All right. Okay, I'll close the public, and we'll bring it back to the Commission for questions of the staff or the, let's just say of the staff right now, and then we can go to the applicant if need be. Marianne, any questions at this time?
This is the one that was three, three bedrooms currently?
Correct.
I just, my only concern with all of these is we're packing a lot more people in that dense area where there's, I mean, I know they're offering a lot of parking there.
Right.
But they're going to have people over, and there's nowhere to park around there. My only concern is...
All right, we can, okay. Any questions for, right now, staff?
I'll just, have you received any feedback from the public at all as a staff? Have you received any feedback from the public at all? None at all.
Notices were sent to all property owners and all tenants within 500 feet of all properties that we have public hearings for. No calls, no one came up to review the staff reports. No one came to review the drawings.
Commissioner Self-Vacanick, any questions at this point, or?
Uh, possibly later.
All right. I have a few. In going through the staff report, I'm, and I've really taken a good look at it, and I'm trying to reconcile some of the information in the staff report with what I see in the plans, keeping in mind that I have nothing to do with those types of stuff. Okay? But, and we, there was a question I asked regarding the calculation of the units per, okay, the 1,750, which you answered very well in the email. I have a question regarding, on that same line in the staff report, we have, the required amount is 1,750 square feet per unit of land area, and then the proposed project is 1,971 square feet per unit. I'm assuming of land area, right?
Right.
Okay. And so, my question is, if I take that number times five per unit, we come up with a project that's bigger than the lot.
Is that, let's see.
Ninety-eight fifty-five.
Not having a calculator in front of me.
Ninety-eight fifty-five.
It's ninety-eight fifty-five. So I was trying to figure out where that number came from.
Let's see, fifty-two times one eighty, I wish I had a calculator.
Fifty-two times what?
It's ninety-eight fifty-five.
One eighty, it should be fifty-two times one eighty.
Ninety-three sixty.
It's ninety-three sixty on your proposed project.
And then there was the two-and-a-half-foot dedication to the city, which is part of that as well, because it's based on gross, which is before the project with the size of the parcel.
Not the proposed?
No.
This is the proposed project.
Yeah, that, yes. I think we should say in there in the future on the staff reports that that is based on the gross figure.
But that doesn't, that doesn't include the two-and-a-half. If you use the two-and-a-half feet, time, if you use fifty-two times one eighty-two-point-five, you're still going to come up with a number that's higher than the, that lot size.
It's ninety-four ninety.
Yeah, it's higher than ninety, it's higher than, ninety-eight fifty-five is higher than ninety-four ninety. Right. I'm just trying to get some...
Well, let's see, I'm taking off guard because I don't have my calculator.
I think it would be appropriate for the architect to...
Somebody want to help out here so we can figure out how we're getting a bigger property on a, exceeding the lot?
Well, you divide the gross property.
We have too many units for the lot size?
No.
No, you have too much land area for the parcel.
Land area. Ninety-four ninety? Five by five.
Yeah, so you divide the whole thing by five, and you get the nineteen, whatever it was. Here we go, thank you.
You follow?
Mm-hmm.
The way the math is supposed to work, you just take the gross land area.
Yeah.
Divide by square foot per unit, seventeen fifty.
Yes.
And you, and then you...
Well, that tells you how many units you can put on, that tells you how many units, yeah, no problem with five units. I'm trying to figure out, if I take that the, the staff report says that the proposed project will have 1,971 square feet of land area per unit, if I multiply that by five, I get, I get a, an amount of land area that's greater than the dimensions of the parcel.
Yeah, that should be one-eight-nine-eight, yeah.
One-eight-nine-eight.
Yeah. So, yep, duly noted, yeah.
Well, how do you get it that?
It looks like...
That's not off the plans?
No, it's not off the plans, no. Not off the, you can tell them what the plans say.
I don't have plans.
What's the square footage of the, you're all fine.
I'm just trying to, okay.
Okay, nine-three-six-zero.
That's the land area. It's the site.
And that's, that's, yeah, nine-three-six-zero. Take that with you. Yeah, nine-three-six-zero is what it says on there. So, let's see. Nine-three-six-zero, and that's after the dedication.
So what number is in question?
The proposed project, this is on page eight of the staff report, second box down, the required dwelling unit density is 1,750 per square feet of land area per unit, okay, which is a minimum number, so you can go higher than that, but you can't exceed the lot.
Right, and he's not exceeding the lot, is, if you divide the lot...
Well, I'm just, I'm, the nineteen-seventy-one's trying, that's what I'm trying to get.
Yeah, that's an incorrect number.
All right, okay.
I did that incorrectly.
All right, well, okay, well, that's good.
Yeah.
All right. I didn't know if that was a, somebody doing some work, you know, you measure out what's on the plans.
Right.
All right. All right. Then, just another question. Our project height, the structure is thirty feet, here is thirty-three, thirty-three and a half feet.
Right.
And our, I know our code is thirty, so the other three...
Thirty-five.
For thirty-five? Thirty-five?
Over thirty feet has to be set back an additional five feet.
Okay, and that's, is that equipment and stuff on top?
Well, it, there is a parapet in the middle of the building.
Yeah.
So it sets back, and then the parapet's in the center, kind of.
All right, so we're allowed to go that high. And then, let's see, I had another question regarding the parking. On page nine of the staff report, it talks about, the code talks about how you compute the parking, and I see how you computed it with respect to the spaces, but there's a sentence in there, it says that, plus one-half space for each bedroom or other room that can readily be used as bedrooms in excess of the first two bedrooms.
Right.
Okay? And then I looked that up in the code, and there was a parenthetic example in there that described what another room could be, and it said a den, excuse me, it said an office or a den, et cetera, I'm assuming.
Right, and there's no definition of that in code the way it is.
Well, I...
Staff has written a memo for staff about how we will interpret this, you know, from the past to now, and that's if, if the front, if the door of the room is bigger than 50 percent of the length, and the room doesn't have a closet, then it's not a bedroom. It's not readily used as a bedroom. It's intended to be a study. And if it had a closet already, then it would be considered a bedroom. And if, that would be readily usable as a bedroom.
Or, and if it had four walls.
Yeah, which, yeah, the one is, half of it's open, so...
If I could back up a little, we were, we were challenged with that for the last year or so, of what does readily mean? You know, the Orange County Sanitation District has a, has a way of charging people for sanitation hookups based on bedrooms, the local sewer district does, and then we started looking that ours really doesn't define a bedroom. So we had to come up with a way, so we came up with a way and actually wrote a memo to that back last December, so then we would treat this consistently throughout all projects. Whether they, because every architect will choose a different word. They'll call it a study, they'll call it an office, they'll call it a bonus room, what have you. Some are doing it as a way to try to get a bedroom and not pay everything related to a bedroom. So we had to find a way to decipher when a bedroom can't be a bedroom. So Tom was able to do that, we did that, and we've been treating all these projects that same consistent way since then, that if it has a few different significant criteria, then it's not a bedroom. Because we, we had to find our own rules. And when we do the code update, we'll put those kind of definitions in it next year.
All right.
Well...
I, I, I...
I share the same concerns as Art. I'm looking at this floor plan. This is the page that it is. Second page, there's something called a study there, but if you take the word study out, it looks just like a bedroom. There's actually even, it looks like there's a framed-in closet here. And again, I was looking at the code section two on page 416, which says, R3 multiple family, two spaces for each dwelling unit for rooms that can easily, can readily be utilized as bedrooms, i.e. bedrooms, dens, offices, additional half-space. So if you're looking at the plans, if you're reading the code, it looks like there's short on parking.
I kind of look at the same thing, that, yeah, that could easily technically be turned into a bedroom. I mean, you put a closet and you put doors on it.
It's a closet.
But you also have to go up three flights to take a shower. I mean, I don't think many people are gonna really turn that into a bedroom. I guess it's always a possibility, but...
Well, a room that can be used, I guess.
And the permit will always, always show the number of bedrooms in it. The condo plan, which is another form of regulation, will always show the bedroom count, and will show actually that floor plan in perpetuity with the Department of DRE.
Do you recall, you, I don't remember if you were here at that time, and I don't remember Tom, but on Chestnut, just the second unit south of Florista on the west side of the street, when he was trying to build the four-story undergarage, okay?
Right.
The front unit was brought into question for bedrooms. They ended up having to, on the top floor, alter that room into a study only. They had to remove a closet. I don't remember what else they did.
Yeah, I wasn't here.
Oh, yeah. We did something on that, but I don't remember right off the top of my head.
Yeah.
It has the window looking outside, they made it a little bit smaller.
Right.
So that helped.
Yeah, it would, it'd be kind of difficult to sell a three-bedroom house without some kind of study in it today, especially because of the fact that people are working at home more often and things like that. So it's, you know, you don't want to reject that outright, saying that people can't have a den in their, or a study in their house.
Well, I'm not, if I may, I would just say that I like the project, and I, I'm not saying that you don't take a study out, I'm saying that you have to provide a half a space for the, for the parking, simply because, in my opinion, it's a room that can be readily used as a bedroom. I, and I think it's just that, I, to me, to me, it's obvious, I mean, there's a, you have, you have an alcove in every one of the, in every one of the rooms, you know, you don't even have to put, I mean, all you had to do is put your, put your closet doors on. I mean, you don't even, there's no framing left to do, just go get the floor-to-ceiling doors, put them up. Whether or not anybody would do that or not, I don't know. Would it be, but I don't think that's up, we don't need to worry about whether they're going to do it or not do it. I'm, I'm reading, I'm simply reading the code, and it seems pretty, pretty clear that if they're in determining parking, not whether or not we like the project, not whether or not we like the, whether it's a study, a den, an office, if it's a room that can be readily used as a, as a bedroom, the code requires that we, we, you know, allow for a half a space. And in four of the, in four of the units on site, we have a study or a den and a study, I mean, and this one is, I don't know if this one is all studies, but whatever. Nonetheless, there are four of them, and at a half a space each, that's two, two additional spaces would be required. So if, which would mean fifteen on site, and... And so it would be, so it would be, in my opinion, it needs four spaces, and so that probably need to be redesigned or, or whatever to accommodate it. Now, that's just for that part of it.
Yeah, and it looks like they would like to respond to that, that you...
Go ahead, if that's, go ahead.
That room that's downstairs has, there's no framing for a closet. The, the ceiling's nine feet high there, so you'd have to put in a nine-foot-high closet door, which is not readily available, so you'd have to do some framing. Also, the wall is completely open to the entry, so again, framing would be required to turn that into a bedroom.
Right. Well, all right, go ahead.
Also, the code allows, even the building code allows for, for, when you talk about a loft space or a, or a den, or an, I forget the exact term in the, in the building code, like an adjunct room, maybe, maybe Ron knows, where if the wall is more than 50 percent open, then it's considered part of the adjacent, adjacent space. Any room, even if you had a large walk-in closet, could be converted into a bedroom. You could put a bunk bed in a bathroom and call it a bedroom. I mean, we can't, we can't guess what people, how people are going to break the law in the future and, and alter a project or make a project unfeasible at this point. Additionally, in the CCNRs that are reported with the project and handed to prospective owners if they're for sale, and of course, Mr. Keskey's going to remain an owner, and these are rental units, as far as I understand, for the foreseeable future. CCNRs that the city has to approve and are recorded generally say that any architectural or building changes have to be approved by the association, and also, if there's any modification to the building, it has to be approved by the city. So there's still documents in place for readily converting any room into a bedroom or making any changes like that in these, in these structures. Again, you could have a large master bedroom and put 10 bunk beds in there. You're really not, you're really not able to preclude anybody from piling people in there. We do that as, as developers and as landlords, we try to control how many people are, are moving in. So calling, calling a space readily usable as a bedroom is, I think, a slippery slope you're going to get on. And as far as previous projects that we've done in the city that have had similar type of spaces, we've worked with, with staff for years on other projects, and we've enjoyed a very fruitful relationship both ways. And Tom and Steve have seen these plans since last November, so we've been working with them for a long time. So there's no, this is no surprise to anybody what's on these plans, and it's been thoroughly looked at and thoroughly vetted.
Okay. All right. Any of you, any other comments?
I just wanted to add to, also, many of my tenants that I have are professionals, and they, they work from home, and the study is a study, that's what, that's what rents for us. And they want that, they, they've got their two kids, they got their bedrooms, the master bedroom, and they want their space to run their business out of their, or have an office space, attorneys or, or accountants or whatever that do their homework. And that's, again, it's one of the things that we're, you know, we're trying to provide something that people want. And, you know, like I said, anyone can break the law anytime, anywhere, and that's not our intent. Our intent is to provide a nice, a nice living quarters for people that are willing to bring their kids into this area and pay the rents that they have to pay, or buy, pay the payments they have to pay to own a condo versus, you can't buy a house here for, for most people these days. versus you can't buy a house here for, for most people these days. And so it's just a, it's a, an upscale units for people that are, that want to be in this area to, to give their kids a good education, and also be able to work from home.
Okay. Why don't we just, we'll just keep moving on with questions, and then we'll get their answers, and get their answers, and we can discuss when we get into the discussion. Want to do that one?
Okay.
Rather than, rather than bantering, let's maybe get through the questions, and then get our questions answered, then we can discuss it and then go from there. I have one other question regarding parking. Has to do with the, the twenty, it has to do, it's probably a turning radius thing.
Yeah.
In between building A and B, there's a curved section of landscaping. And if you're trying, if you're parking in, in the, uh, in the garage for unit number one in building A, and it would be the top triangle there, I guess, is the space, that one. If you're go to, if you're gonna try to back out, you don't have, you're going about, I, I put a, I used a ruler, and I'm not, and it, look, as near as I can figure, you're only gonna go about eight feet straight back, and you're gonna hit the, hit the planner. It seems to me that we're not meeting the, the twenty-eight-foot requirement straight back that we should have between the buildings. We have twenty-eight, you know, on the rear ones, we've got twenty-eight on the two, on building A and B. You've got twenty-eight for unit two, or excuse me, unit three, no, unit two. For unit two, between unit two and unit three, you've got twenty-eight feet. But we don't have twenty-eight feet. Going back, and, and in the way it's configured, I guess they're gonna have to wind their way out of their parking space until they get backed up to the garage of unit five, or unit, what is, I get these units mixed up, unit four, no, unit three. They're gonna back, until they can make the turnout. I, I, I just don't, it, it seems to me, it seems tight to me. I mean, I'm trying to figure this out here with respect to the, the turning radius. That's just a comment, and so how, I'm, I'm wondering how we got that far.
It's, it's a turning radius, it's not a straight line, so.
Is it possible to remove that? Is it possible to straighten that out more?
We could, we could do some, well, some work on that and straighten it out, and we are over on the landscape calculation now, so we could move that radius back to open that up a little bit.
In fact, we've, I just finished a project on Howard Avenue with the same basic design, and you guys are welcome to come out and look at it. We have the same kind of a, kind of a curve, but it's, the drawing doesn't do it justice, because we, this is, this is just drawn way too far over. If you come and see what we actually built, there's a lot, there's a lot more room.
You can do a pointer.
Oh.
I can't see.
I know, but what we're dealing with here is, we're dealing with what's in front of us, not what's, what's on another front.
When the civil engineer draws the, the civil plan, which defines where the driveway's gonna go, he takes that into account as well. This is more of an architectural picture of which button there is. So this line here really should go more from this corner, right there, and take a, a little bit gentler curve and end up somewhere around here.
That makes more sense.
This is really showing way too much landscaping in this area. Again, it's an architectural, what do you wanna call it, freehand or? But really, this, the curb should really be along this line here and end up at this corner here. And that's, again, that's what we ended up building, the same kind of design, because we've pretty much tested this design. And it works pretty well. I've driven my truck in there and gotten in that spot, and I didn't have any trouble. And we don't, obviously, we don't want to build something that you're gonna have complaints from renters or homeowners in the future. That would be disastrous. That would be tearing something out and making a lot of changes. So I agree with you, and I think it's just drawn a little bit too generously, freehand. I mean, we could certainly revise it and show a better drawing that's more precise.
Or you could work with the staff.
Pardon me?
Work with the staff.
Yeah, work with the staff, yeah.
There is, we go through the, the other plans later on, the.
Yeah, the civil plan.
That's, it's made the radius, but even so, that would give you more.
Yeah, we can get a thirty-foot radius out of it.
There's enough room on the lot to make that work much better, it's just, it's really not shown very well.
Yeah, really.
Okay. Just a, just a question. Is there a requirement for a, a amount of clear space behind a garage in the code? I mean, this is twenty-eight, what, what is the twenty-eight feet? Is that, is that?
Oh, it's a turning radius, it's a, it's an arc, it's not a straight line back. And that's why that's shaped like an arc.
And so where's the, where's the, where's the center? Where, where would be the center of the arc? That you'd, you'd, so you would draw your arc at twenty-eight feet?
Yeah, it's, uh.
You put it in the center of the garage, and?
There's a guy who does it every day.
Twenty-eight feet from the, the garage door opening, back, just, just like I showed with the arrow and the line.
The diagonal arrow, so.
So you take the edge of the garage door, come back to twenty-eight feet, and then strike your arc.
Okay.
I mean, if you did the arrow the other way.
Going this way.
It's like the same amount when I measured on my pen, it's twenty-eight feet.
So it appears with the scale that we have here, we could extend that radius up to probably thirty feet without too much issue and still maintain a landscape edge along that. And then two, you're able to back, in the code, I believe it mentions that you can back over a six-inch curb with landscaping as much as two and a half feet, I believe, it says. So technically, with that landscaping there, I really have like a thirty-foot radius already. If you use two feet of the landscape beyond that curb edge.
How much area of landscaping would you be losing?
Well, we got twenty-eight feet, you know, between the buildings and go by two, fifty-six square feet.
Because you're right at the.
But we could still, we still could be landscaping, because we're allowed to go that two and a half feet beyond a curb edge if the curb is less than six inches high.
Well, as long as you maintain, as long as you maintain the, the fifteen percent landscape area.
And you're not gonna get much in the way of large plants in that little two-foot section. There won't be any massive trees.
I believe that's the end of my questions. That's the end of my questions.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
In the same area we're talking about, POS, I suspect that's private open space.
You got it, yes.
Along, along that fence line. Couple ques, couple questions related to that. It said that with private open space, no, no dimension should be less than ten feet. Is that, is that the fact that this is five feet in there, is that in compliance with the code?
No. Ten feet's the minimum dimension of a usable space. They can have more space that's under the ten feet, it just can't be counted in the calculation.
So we have over two hundred square feet of private open space in this project, right?
Yeah, we're only required to have a hundred per unit.
Okay, so the.
That's a ten-by-ten space. So these, this is obviously over ten-by-ten by the length of it. And then I've also counted, you know, down the side probably two, which they can use, but it, it can't be used in the calculation.
And then the, the, in the front to the south, there's two patios, private open space.
Uh-huh.
Are those extending into the setback?
Yes, the building is setback to twenty feet. And we're allowed to use that.
Private open space in, cutting the setback, and I, I don't, I'm looking at.
Well, there are not structures in that thing. The building can't go into the twenty-foot setback. But a concrete patio can. That's been a pretty typical condition on majority of the projects that.
Yeah, they can extend in, maybe I'm in error, but it says they can extend in thirty inches.
No, that's a structure.
That's a structure.
Is these patios aren't structures?
No, this is just a concrete slab to set the patio furniture on.
Well, I read that they're going to put a fence around it.
Three foot tall, it could be a three.
Forty-two inches?
Yeah.
Three foot? So that's not a structure?
No.
No, you can do that in your front yard.
Get it on mine.
You can do it right on your property line.
It's not a structure.
You can put a front yard fence, you can put a, a short fence on a front yard of every house in Los Alamos.
Yes, but not, well, this fence is part of the private open space, though.
Still fence. Yeah. If it had a patio cover on it, or if it was inclosable, we'd be having a different conversation. And it prevents them from ever covering it.
Okay.
Just like.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, I'll, uh, bring it back to the commission, we'll close the oral comments. If we have more questions, we'll ask, I guess, we'll, right now, we can.
Can we?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So you closed it, this is to Steven.
Okay.
We're getting back to the next thing. Seventeen point one, six point one zero zero A, two, three.
Seventeen, go back again, seventeen.
Seventeen point one, six point one zero zero A. And, uh, fourth line, we're talking about extending thirty inches into the required deck. Canopies, cantilevers, balconies, decks, and similar features may extend to maximum thirty inches. And this is.
This is none of those.
Huh?
This is none of those.
Okay, you know, it's a patio, it's a deck, patio.
Patio slab.
It's on grade, yeah.
These things are above grade.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, all right.
Just like a, let's say you had a house that was elevated about two feet and it had steps. Concrete steps. Steps go out towards the front.
Okay.
But not necessarily a covered roof on top of those steps.
How big are these patios?
I just put mine away.
Well, ten by.
Ten by fourteen.
Fourteen point three, probably, or.
It's a hundred and forty-three square feet.
I'm looking at B now.
Can you go back to their front drawing for him?
Trying to see the distinction between open and covered raised porches, land plate, landing places. It's the one that would be a landing place. May not project more than three feet side parcel, and in, there's a knuck seed six feet into required front or rear setbacks. That's subsection B.
Where's that?
Page nine of eighty-five.
Sixteen, one hundred B.
Page nine, in the code, yeah.
Seventeen, sixteen.
Nine of eighty-five.
Wish we had a computer.
Open uncovered.
That would mean no one could have sidewalks.
I'm just reading the code, Tom.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, that's what it means, is that, uh, no one could have any thing in it.
I'm just reading the code. Okay.
Open uncovered, raised porches, landing places, and outside stairwells may project not closer than three feet to a side parcel line, and in any district not exceeding six feet into a required front or rear setback in any residential zoning district. So it covers all the districts.
If I may, I, I think, I think, I think the, I think the issue is the raised porch, the raised porch. If you're on grade with a slab, then you're on grade. If I, but if you have.
Landing place.
I don't know what, I don't know.
Yeah.
We don't have airplanes, I don't know. So I think, I think the, I think a slab is probably okay, on grade. But if it were raised, um.
It can represent two of the space.
Well, if it's raised up, right?
So I guess when you start peeling the words apart, you have porches, landings, and outside stairwells. The question is, is the word raised meant to define all three of those things? Because the word raised is in there, and none of these are raised, these are all.
Well, no, if they're on, if they're on grade, I think that's.
This is on grade.
The key is on grade.
Yeah.
Now, actually, the new one that he referenced on Howard is raised.
It's on grade, it's raised like nine inches. Raised means like you have stairs going up, and then there's a landing, and you go further up.
Yeah, you guys have to use the mic and go through the chair, please.
All right.
Now?
I'm just, well, I, I.
Raised landing means you're going up some steps, and then turning on a landing, and then going up more steps into your unit. Any house has a stoop and a walkway going up to the front door.
Okay.
This is no different than that. This is up one step.
Okay.
The, the one on Howard you're talking about, I don't recall how high this one is.
I shouldn't even brought that up, but it's just, whatever. Okay.
The other solution.
Keep the K on this one.
Sorry, the other solution, if you guys really don't like it, is the, the, the concrete area could be six feet, and then it could be grass beyond that. It's all, it's all private open space out to that ten-foot mark. So is it concrete, or is it landscape, grass, or is it turf block, or whatever?
Right. Okay. All right. Okay. Good for discussion here, any discussion on this. I just, I guess my major, I'll go out, my, my major, but did you want to say something? I don't wanna, you were gonna say something.
I'm just gonna make a comment that I'm happy with them working with the staff on the turning radius for the car. I don't think they need to bring us anything. I just agree that you have to also consider that teenagers may be in this unit learning to drive, and they will take it out, just as much as I will.
Yeah.
And I've had to learn to turn sharp. The study, going to that. Personally, you can change anything, you're right. You could change the living room, put bunk beds in it, and just forget you had a living room, and have everything become a bedroom. We have no way of constantly controlling or knowing what people do once they're inside the unit. And they're, excuse me, they're rentals, that's up to a landlord. Even if they bought, we have no control once the unit is past our inspection and our approval. But I look at these units, and especially because I just went through the units over here that we approved in Old Town West. And I was kind of taken back that, I thought they were pretty set up really nice. And they had room for a study away from bedrooms, and I like that. I like the fact that a study and a bedroom, because it was down lower, works great. Right now, my study is a bedroom given up to be a study. And so that takes away from that space. Having it down on the ground level away from noise factors, to me, was a perk for anybody, especially with the amount of people working at home. So that particular area, the study itself, I actually thought was a nice concept versus what we have nowadays. And the fact is, the living spaces go above that. So I don't have any issues with it as a study. And I think that no matter what we do, you're right, we cannot worry about what everybody does once it, it's approved. Anything can happen, and we have no control over that. But as far as how it's set up right now, if I was looking at a professional person, this would be an ideal place for them. They're away from the living quarters, they're down in a quiet area, and it's nicer for them. I agree with Wendy. I'm okay with the study, especially because the bathroom's two floors up. I mean, I don't think that many people are gonna turn it in, and we don't really have any control over that, what happens if they get sold and.
I'll just interject, I, I have no objection to the study. I have, and I think it's a great feature. Where I'm coming from is, and, 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 you're right, you're right. We cannot control what's gonna happen, you know, once you sell one, once you put somebody in it, what they're gonna do or not do, whether they're gonna keep it as that, you can have the regular, it doesn't, that's, whatever happens, happens. But right now, where I'm approaching this from is that, and it's from the parking end of it. I like the plan, I like the study, but it can be, it doesn't need to be converted, i.e., put in a, a. it can be, it doesn't need to be converted, i.e. put in a, a door, or, or do that. I mean, you could, it can be done. It's, if it can be, the code says if it can be readily used as a bedroom. Not, that you're going to convert it to one, but you're going to be using it as one. And, which is going to bring traffic, and it'd be somebody that's going to come in and have a car, and the code says that if it is, if it is a room that can be readily utilized as, as a, um, one of these, then there's a required half space for that. And, uh, I think that accompli, it accomplishes exactly what, what we, I'll say, not to say what we don't want to happen, but if it happens, we've allowed enough parking for it. And the code, that's the purpose of that in the code. And so while, uh, it doesn't mean that you can't build the unit, it means that you have to provide the parking space for these, for these rooms that could be readily used as a bedroom. So if you have the space to do it, you have the space. If you don't have the space, then, then if that means going in, dropping down into four units, you know, it'd be a less dense project, but you, you still have the, you meet the code. I mean, that's, we have to provide the parking, and I, and I like the idea of working, working it out on the radius, but again, we've got to pay attention then to the landscaping and to the, we start, we start trying to cram too much into a site, even though, even though you have, it is a five-unit lot from our calculation, it's five units provided it fits, whatever you come in with fits. I guess you can make a smaller unit, maybe, I mean, and, I don't know, and find the space, I don't know. But, uh, it's a five-unit lot, but you've got to be able to fit it in with a twenty-foot setback and, on the front, and five on the sides, and ten on the rear, and fifteen percent landscaping, and a hundred, minimum hundred square feet or so for private space. If you can get that all in, and it, but if you put a study in there, or a, a room that can be readily used as a bedroom, then you need another half a space. I, I, you know, I, I, it's just how, it's, it's what it is, is what it is. I like the project, but I don't think there's enough parking for it, honestly, and if that's.
But you're hypothetically looking at what could change.
No, I'm looking at the code. The code says if you have a room that, that can be readily used, and they give the examples specifically what we have here. A den, uh, a, uh, what was the other one, an office? And that's exactly what the code is giving you the examples for, and when you encounter that, uh, and we don't have to parse it too much, we all have common sense up here, you, you have this room, it can be, it's a half, it's a half a space. There's four of them in the project, and that's two. Now, if, if you can't do that and put in five units, then you can't put five units in. You redesign it and get the number, you get the total number of units you can get, as long as you can comply with the development standards in the zone. That's my perspective, so. That's where I'm at. Excuse me, go ahead.
They mentioned about they're going to vacate the driveways in front of the, in front of the lot, so we're really, we are gaining two spots there of parking. I'm just saying, just looking at it, I understand your point.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm looking at it from an extra standpoint, is that we're gaining two parking spots there. And another thing is, refresh me, I think we've talked about this before, and maybe this goes into CCNRs, when it comes to actually using your garage as a garage, because we know that our neighborhoods here, whether it's Rossmore, Los Alamos, how many garages aren't used to park cars into it? It's amazing, you know, how that happens, and so getting back to your parking concerns is, have we seen this, I don't know, maybe, maybe we can open this up to the applicant with CCNRs, but is there a way to put something like that in with CCNRs, to keep some free space into the garage? And maybe we can, we can ask for that to help mitigate the fact for the parking standards. I mean, I know you can always break those rules and people don't follow them, and that happens all the time, you know what I mean, but, uh, try to help out with some of the parking concerns.
Well, and the parking is thirteen between the garages and the three extra spaces. It doesn't include the parking that's in front of the units on the street. And those, my understanding, we could count those in, in the path. Did we change?
No, you have to meet, you have to meet the parking requirements on the property.
Okay.
Those are public spaces.
How many, how many parking spaces are there outside of the garages on this, on these?
Three.
Three, in the back.
So it's garages plus three.
Right. If you go over there right now in that same area, people are parking, either they're stacking, or they're parking, they're parking.
Oh, yeah.
How you, is it in the CCNRs, are you going to require, there's going to be spots where you can't park? I'm sure neighbors are not going to allow people to park a bunch of cars in there.
So, the CCNRs already, I believe it might be a condition, but the CCNRs always include verbiage about you must park in the garage, not in the, not in the guest spaces, and you must, uh, you must be able to put your car in and close the door. So one of the other things in the planning code requires us to include at least two hundred cubic feet of lockable storage outside the unit, meaning in the garage. Um, that's outside of the area where the cars park. So you're allowed to store your junk stuff and your two cars. And then the, the parking, the guest parking will be striped, of course, and marked so that you can't, you know, you can't stack up cars. And it'll, there should be, usually they put up a sign that says, you know, guest parking only, or residents and guests only of the, of the address.
It's condition thirty-four A.
Yeah.
All units shall maintain within the garage the ability to park two cars at all times. Garages shall not be converted to any other use. Parking spaces in the garages shall be made available to the occupants of the unit at all times. There should be no business activities or daycare conducted within or from the garage. We've got a lot of experience with garage problems. So we not only put it as a condition of approval, we put it as a condition of approval that it's in their CCNRs. So when they, when they supply us with their CCNRs for draft review, the city attorney's office go through that before they're actually recorded and sent to the DRE and that mysterious part that I don't know about.
I mean, that, probably to get rid of all your concerns, I understand, but.
Victor, any?
No, I've already voiced my, my issues.
All right. Anybody else have any comments? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. I forgot what I was approving, sorry. I got to get my number, sorry, seventeen dash oh three.
I'll second. Is that with the, uh?
With the changes that we recommended for the.
The landscaping.
Landscaping.
Okay, any further discussion? We need a roll call vote on this, or is this a?
A roll call vote would be nice.
Vice Chair DeBolt?
No.
Commissioner Quilty?
Yes.
Commissioner Grove?
Yes.
Commissioner Low?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley, absent, and Commissioner Self-Vacanick?
No.
Okay. Motion passes? Or is that, is that for, we've got it all covered?
For that, yeah.
For that, for this part?
For that item only.
Okay, great. Okay. All right, um.
So then you have another, two more resolutions?
We have, we have, uh,
On the same.
On the same item.
Right.
Okay, so, okay, so you want to make?
Don't laugh.
I'll, I'll do that for you.
Thank you.
Have the attorney read it.
Next motion would be to approve resolution number seventeen dash zero four.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Chair Andrade, absent. Vice Chair DeBolt?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Quilty?
Yes.
Commissioner Grove?
Yes.
Commissioner Low?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley? Absent. Commissioner Self-Vacanick?
No.
And the third one would be to adopt resolution number seventeen dash zero five, which is a resolution of the Planning Commission, sitting as the subdivision committee.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, second?
Do we not have to have a separate meeting for the subdivision?
You are, we're already, we're already.
Oh, we already are, okay.
We try to overdo that.
Got it, okay.
Just to make sure.
Okay. Chair Andrade, absent. Vice Chair DeBolt?
No.
Commissioner Quilty?
Yes.
Commissioner Grove?
Yes.
Commissioner Low?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley, absent, and Commissioner Self-Vacanick?
No.
Okay, so that takes care of seven A.
Now, you'll have another item that Tom will read a staff report and tell you the differences on that. He'll also ask you to open the public hearing after you hear his staff report, and then he'll.
So we're moving to, we're going to go ahead and move to seven C. Correct, let's do that, yeah, then, that way we're.
Oh, you want to move to seven C?
Well, that is the.
The image.
That is the, that's the bookend, I believe, isn't it?
Oh, okay, yeah, let's do it.
Isn't it?
Oh, that's the flip one.
The flip, yeah, yeah. Let's do that one, because it's all, I think it's going to be virtually the same.
Is it the same width?
Uh, yes, it is fifty-two. All right, vice.
If I can get everyone on the same page, we are going to item number seven C, which is regarding four zero six one Farquhar. So please get your plans out, let's say four zero six one Farquhar, um. Item seven C, in yellow, you'll see a, you'll see a sticker that says what item it is, seven C. Printed in red on a, with a yellow highlighter. Seven C.
No, I see. I'm used to seeing it from this side.
All right.
You got it. Okay, everyone has the same drawing? Tom, you ready to go?
Yep. Right, Vice Chair DeBolt and members of the Planning Commission, site plan review sixteen oh six, conditional use permit sixteen fifteen, and tentative track map sixteen oh one are the consideration of another five-unit residential condominium project at four oh six one Farquhar Avenue in the multiple-family residential zoning district. Uh, the applicants are, again, one of them is here with us, Nick Zampaquelis, who's talked, spoken before, and the other owner would be his applicant is his wife. Uh, the project would demolish an existing house and construct five condominium units. This project will mirror the one, the project to the east side of the, this at four oh seven one Farquhar. The five units will be located in three buildings. The units range from one thousand six twenty to one thousand nine hundred seventy-eight square feet. And four units will be three-bedroom, and one unit will be four-bedroom. Uh, all structures will be three stories in height. This project is presented as a residential development plan, which requires this site plan review. Uh, the maximum density allowed in this district is, uh, thirty dwelling units per acre, this is twenty-three. The property owner will again dedicate two and a half feet to the alley. Uh, the project will have thirteen spaces in total, five, two-car garages, three outdoor spaces, and a car access is from the alley. Uh, the architectural style is the same, let me forward to that. There it is, okay. Um, is the same as, as basically the other ones. Um, the site plan shows a twenty, I mean, shows twenty point six, uh, land, percent landscaping passing the fifteen percent required. And staff supports approval of conditional use permit sixteen fifteen, site plan review sixteen oh six, tentative track map sixteen oh one due to what appears to be exceptional layout and design. And once again, you are as the subdivision committee and part, uh, planning commission. So, back to you.
Do we have any, anybody, any member of the public wish to comment, uh, on this, or is it more or less ditto?
Um, what everybody said in reverse.
Yes, in reverse, okay, great, okay, all right, all right.
Say your last name.
Zampaquelis.
Just the way, just the way it's spelled. Okay, all right, um. Any questions, uh, from the commission to the, to the staff regarding this?
I think it's the same.
Regarding, uh, the turning radius that we had in the other one?
Same thing.
All right. Any discussion, any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution seventeen dash nine with the same conditions that we, on the turning radius that we previously made.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Chair Andrade, absent. Vice Chair DeBolt?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Quilty?
Yes.
Commissioner Grove?
Yes.
Commissioner Low?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley? Absent, and Commissioner Self-Vacanick?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution seventeen dash ten.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second?
Chair Andrade, absent. Vice Chair DeBolt?
No.
Commissioner Quilty?
Yes.
Commissioner Grove?
Yes.
Commissioner Low?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley, absent, and Commissioner Self-Vacanick?
No.
Okay, the third.
So put all of those sets of plans on the floor.
There's one more resolution, isn't there?
Oh, yeah.
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 Next one is.
Resolution seventeen dash eleven.
Which is the Planning Commission, sitting as subdivision committee.
I make a motion?
Second.
Okay.
Chair Andrade, absent. Vice Chair DeBolt?
No.
Commissioner Quilty?
Yes.
Commissioner Grove?
Yes.
Commissioner Low?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley, absent, and Commissioner Self-Vacanick?
No.
Okay, now, if you can toss all your other plans under your desk, or behind you, or something, we are now on the one mark seven B in yellow highlight with red ink, seven B.
Right.
And once everyone gets their plans out.
Ready?
Everyone's ready?
Okay.
Have a staff report?
Thanks, Tom.
Vice Chair DeBolt and members of the Planning Commission, tentative track map sixteen oh four, conditional use permit sixteen eighteen, and site plan review sixteen oh nine are the consideration of a five-unit residential condominium project at three seven five one and three seven five five currently, those are the numbers, uh, Farquhar on an eighty-seven, eight thousand seven hundred sixty square foot parcel in the multifamily zoning district. Um, the applicants, um, are Allison and Olympia Stapakas, and representing them is Nick Zampaquelis. Um, the project, oh, the project would demolish two existing homes and construct five condos. This project will look similar to the others as well. Let me go to that spot. It's slightly smaller than the other, the other ones. Um, the units will be located in three buildings and are in range from one thousand three hundred and twenty-four to one thousand seven hundred seventy-eight square feet. Four units will be in, uh, will be three-bedroom, and one unit will be two-bedroom. All structures will be three stories in height. Maximum density is thirty, and it's at twenty-five. Uh, two and a half will be dedicated to the alley as usual. Uh, please note that staff left the parcel with on the table as forty-eight and a half, because that's originally what it said on the plans. And when they submitted new plans, I, uh, forgot to change that in the staff report. So, uh, the project will have twelve parking spaces total, nine spaces in garages, and, I mean, not, yeah, nine spaces in garages and three open spaces. Uh, the access will be from the alley. The architecture is the same. Let me go to the colored one here. Here we go. Um, it's fifteen percent landscaping is required, it's eighteen point four. Uh, condominiums require conditional use permit as well, and it has the outdoor space, personal space and storage, uh, outside storage, I mean, outside of the unit storage. The tentative track map is required for five or more condominiums, um, and so you'll be sitting as that, the subdivision committee for that. And, uh, this will also require CCNRs as well, and staff supports conditional use permit sixteen eighteen, site plan review sixteen oh nine, tentative track map sixteen oh four, uh, due to the exceptional layout and design of the project. Back to you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open it to the public. If there's any member of the public, you want to speak, uh, on this one, or pretty much like the other one, I think, so.
Pretty much like the other ones.
Little bit narrower, so we end up with a two-bedroom unit. This is much more similar layout to what we just finished up over on Howard, because it's a little bit narrower lot, but we like that we're gonna have three projects similar looking on the, on Farquhar, I think it's gonna be really, really nice looking, something different.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission. Any questions of staff regarding what we're seeing here? Okay, I have a couple. I have two, two issues. One has to do with the height of the building. Or height of the structure. The takeoff point for height, point where you're measuring from, I believe in our code, is the curb, the curb, the closest curb. Is that correct, Tom?
Correct, yeah.
All right. The structure is going to be thirty feet tall, is that correct? Plus the, plus the...
Yeah, that's...
Thirty-three and change.
That's what the plans say, you could ask the architect as well.
Oh, it's, okay, so in driving by that site, there's a retaining wall and the, what I would call the grade level for probably the proposed building, looks to me to be about almost three feet, if it's not three feet, it's pretty close to three feet, above the curb, you can see it right there. So it would seem to me that the height of the structure needs to be reduced, if it's three, if that distance from the curb to the, where it's level, whatever that plane is, if that's three feet, then you're looking at a maximum thirty-foot, or twenty-seven feet on the structure and another three feet for your...
That one, I assume, is three feet to the top of the fence, because we only allow three-foot-tall fences.
Well, I don't know, whatever it is, it's, it's definitely, it's definitely raised from the, from the curb.
And it's, it's about a foot and a half, I would say, but that's a question for them, of course.
I think it's closer to three.
Yeah, okay.
I think those blocks might be eight inches each, sorry, those blocks in the picture might be eight inches each, and I see six, five and a half blocks exposed, so that would be...
Forty inches.
Like, what is it? Five, five blocks times eight would be forty inches, yeah. So you might be right, it might be about...
Pretty close.
Two and a half to three feet.
About three feet, yeah, I think, yeah. So I would think that the structure is going to need to be lowered three feet?
Well, we can do that, or we can lower the grade.
How do you?
During the...
What do you do on the alley?
The, the alley is the height of the curb, of the curb. The lot slopes back to the alley.
Oh, really?
Pretty sure, yeah, the alley is not higher.
Oh, really? Well, whatever, as long, as long as...
As long as we have to...
As long as you're, as long, as long as you're taking off from that front curb, and, and that's the point at which you're going forward, I don't know, I mean, I'm, you know...
We should, we have a preliminary grading plan, but...
Uh, in there?
I don't, I think you have it. And I don't know what the, what the civil, it's not in there, it's a separate...
Yeah.
Engineering, okay.
For the WQMP, you turn that, I don't have the WQMP.
So you're right, we'll have to double-check that and make sure we're not above that limit, you're absolutely right.
And when the foundations are poor, Tom makes a visit.
Right.
To verify all of those things.
We have to comply, we have to be with the grade that the civil engineer recommends, and the, I'm, I have, I can pull up the drawing.
Well, I understand the grade, I mean, you're gonna be, you're gonna be, you're going to be level where you're working, I'm just saying that for the height of the building...
From the curb.
You start from the curb, and you go up, and you, you bring a, you bring a line out or something out, and where you intersect, that's how high your building is.
That's right.
Correct? I mean...
Yeah.
All right. The other, the other question I have goes to, in the staff report on page about three. Page four. It talks about the surrounding zoning and uses, and on the south side, the zone is R1. I think it's footnote, if my memory serves me, footnote eleven B. I don't have it in front of me. Eleven B on table two dash zero three, development standards.
Eleven B? I don't see that, where, what, on that page?
The footnote? You're, 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 no, in our code.
Oh, in the code, okay. So which, which code are you talking about?
Development standards.
Development standard.
Table two point zero three.
I think it's seventeen point oh eight point oh three oh.
Yeah, well, it's, if we go to table two dash zero three.
Right.
In... Yeah, seventeen point oh eight point oh three oh. There's a footnote on height.
Right.
Eleven B says, any portions of the structure located within a hundred feet of R1-zoned property shall not exceed two stories and thirty feet in height. That is R1 to the south. And the, the zone, according to our code, extend, the R1-zone extends to the center of Farquhar. So you're within, the structure will be within a hundred feet of the R1-zone property.
Yeah, you've measured that?
I don't have to measure it, I can look on, I can just look at the, I can look at the map.
No, I'm just, I don't, I...
Well, the, the, the Farquhar, the, the lot, you have a twenty-foot setback on the lot, you have, uh, Farquhar, I believe, is, on the plans, it's sixty feet from, from lot line to lot across, I believe is sixty on the plans. Isn't it? Yeah, it's eighteen feet to the, it's eighteen feet to the center line from the curb. Is that right? And then a twelve-foot parkway and sidewalk, so that's thirty feet until you hit the twenty-foot setback, and twenty feet to the building is sixty.
Any portion of the building.
I guess if you want... No, the zoning districts go to the center of the adjacent street. That's code section.
How many stories is the building to the west?
Three, oh, to the west.
That one's...
It's three-story, next door, right.
It's three-story, right, with subterranean?
It looks it.
Yeah, that's three stories.
It's not subterranean?
Yeah, section seventeen point oh two point oh two oh, paragraph F1, where the zoning map shows a parcel of, or area within a particular zone district, the zoning district shall extend to the center line of an adjacent road, street, parkway, or highway. I don't think we can tweak that.
Sixty-eight.
Seventeen oh two oh what?
Have you measured?
Credit you.
I'm not sure about, knowing the size of the street.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you have, on the plans, the center line for Farquhar Avenue, it's gotta be the center line, is eighteen feet, and to the, to the curb, and then another, another twelve feet of parkway takes you, and sidewalk, takes you to the setback.
Right, and then there's also the wash over there, too.
But the wash is zoned R1.
That's all zoned R1.
Oh, it is? The wash is? I didn't know he's zoned it.
The wash doesn't have a separate, open space zone.
Okay.
It's on the tract, too, believe it or not. So...
When was the building next door built?
Doesn't matter, it's illegal to say.
According to the survey that we have for the, for the grading plan, the street is sixty feet wide.
The, the sixty feet is from the, your lot line all the way across to the sidewalk on the other side of the street.
Right.
Yeah.
The public right of way...
Is sixty, is sixty feet.
Curve to curve is less than that.
I understand.
So what's the question now?
If you're within a hundred feet of the R1-zone property, which begins at the center line of Farquhar, then you're limited to two stories or thirty, and thirty feet.
Is the street in the zone?
No, you're limited to thirty feet.
Okay. Yeah.
Two stories.
Yeah, I just, I don't have a map.
You're limited to thirty feet. Would you like me to make it two stories but thirty feet high? It's limited to thirty feet, that's what the code says.
That's fine, I'm just letting you know what the code is.
And not only that, but the property to the west is taller, and the property to the east is taller. So if you, if you enforce something like that on my property, you're essentially doing some pocket zoning. And the code does allow up to thirty feet, or three stories. Or inclusive of three stories, not more than three stories.
So we would have to do a little more digging on those other units, let's say that that, the front part of it was two stories, they might be compliant, but we don't know right now, we doubt it.
I believe it.
We'd have to dive into those.
Yeah.
I don't think it's dictating that the entire lot has to be three stories. I'm sorry, I don't think it's...
No, no, it's portions, it's portions of the structure.
Correct.
Have to be, so it would be...
I think that's something we have to...
So it's, you may have to step it up, you could step it and go up.
I think it's something we have to go back.
But you also need to check the, the... You'll need to check the, the actual grade, because you are lower on that with respect to building height. Right. So maybe should we continue this to a month, let you guys figure that out, rather than vote on it?
Would the applicant like to request a continuance?
Well...
Give us a chance to iron this out?
I, I'm fully willing to iron these things out, but the grade should not be an issue, because it's defined that the grade is from the curb, so as long as we meet with part of the code, it's irrelevant what the, what you see in an existing condition, we will create the proper condition to be within the code.
That's fine.
Okay.
Need to see a set of plans, so do that.
You have a set of plans. Shows thirty feet, and the code requires us to be from the top of the curb, thirty feet. We could add a note on the, on the plans that say, measured from the top of curb, if it's not already on there, I don't know if it is, but that's easy enough to add a note.
We're dealing, we're dealing with...
And as far as the, the adjacent R1-zone, there's properties all along this street that are hitting that thirty-foot height limit, so...
Thirty-foot height isn't, if I may, I don't wanna get into a...
I was just...
I will just say, in my, in my reading of the code, it is, it is, if you are within a hundred feet of the R1-property, that portion of the structure that is within a hundred feet can be only two stories, not exceeding, it says two stories and three, thirty feet in height.
And it is what it says.
That is, that is it, right there, so...
Yeah, it sounds like...
So...
Sounds like there's a discrepancy in the code, because other part of the code says thirty feet inclusive of up to three stories for another part of the development standard. It probably should be consistent.
Yeah, probab, well, if I had, if I were making that rule, I would probably, I'd probably eliminate the and thirty feet.
Yeah, we, we can't stand here.
But we're not doing that here.
We can't stand here and change the code.
Yeah, yeah, right. So, so...
It's a little bit nebulous.
So that's where we're at, okay, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, we'll bring it back here, and, or the public comment, period, and then I would make the motion.
The, the public hearing would remain open.
Remain open, let's...
Matter continued to a date certain, which would be May the...
Following meeting, yeah.
I'll make a motion to continue.
You go.
To May twenty-fourth, the fourth, Wednesday of May, is May twenty-fourth.
At seven o'clock PM.
To continue to May twenty-fourth.
I'll second that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Do you wanna take a break before we go?
Take about a, about a five minutes. Okay, I'll bring the, reopen the meeting here, reconvene, whatever we wanna call it. Item...
Seven D.
Seven D.
Yep. Okay. Not sure what they're doing there. Vice chair DeBolt and members of the planning commission, let's see, is everyone here?
Excuse me.
Anybody else? Okay, all right, conditional use permit seventeen oh two is a request to allow a standby generator to be installed in the planned light industrial zone. The applicant's here with us tonight, Al Gamboa of Milestone Wireless, they work for Verizon Wireless on this project, at least, and in two thousand fourteen, Mr. Gamboa filed for a conditional use permit thirteen oh nine involving the installation of a generator behind a building at one oh eight five one Portal Drive, however, it was never installed up to this date, and this approval expired after eighteen months, which means that it has to be resubmitted as a new CUP, so this is seventeen oh two. And the main part of the wireless installation, whoop, took that.
I did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the main part of the wireless is on the front at Portal Drive, and this is behind the building. I, I'm not sure whether you recall that, do you know what I'm talking about, Steve?
Well, here's the cul-de-sac, if we can show you.
Right. And the installation, the original installation's at the front, and then this is at the back, the generator. Yeah. And the generator for, just normal, every week will run fifteen minutes a week at sixty-nine decibels as its main, but its main purpose is for emergencies, in case there's an earthquake and the power goes down, or, or something like that. And so they're building a wall around it, which takes it down below the fifty-five decibels that are required for the, the next door zone, which is CF zone, because of it being a school on the other side of the fence. And as currently shown, the proposed generator meets all the conditions, as did before, and meets the requirements for wireless telecommunications facilities, such as it can't have signage, the accessory equipment, it's in an enclosure, and colors and materials blend with the surrounding materials as well of the building behind it. And based on these considerations, staff recommends that the planning commission, once again, approve this project as conditional use permit seventeen oh two.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to come up and comment on this? Seeing none, we'll come back to the commission. Any questions of staff regarding the report? So this is basically what we approved?
Before, yeah.
The location hasn't changed?
No, not at all.
All the same, okay.
It's exactly the same.
The site plan is exactly alike?
Exactly alike, it's, yeah.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve seventeen dash twelve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Next item on the agenda will be, was it, any information from the staff, committee development director, anything, any reports?
Bike trail is underway, the LA County Flood Control District will be done with their portion of the bike control work, and then we should be starting right after, I'm sorry, the bike trail work, and there's still some pipeline work over there, so you'll see that , too. And there's still some pipeline work over there, so you'll see that, too. You're gonna, you're actually watching three projects, and we're trying not to stumble each, over each other, and we're trying to make sure that they're not ruining our surfaces before we go in and redo our surfaces. So that's going on the bike trail. We should have a pre-construction meeting for Los Albe Boulevard project next week, and then a construction could begin within two weeks. We're not sure until we have the pre-con meeting. All contracts are signed on that. And then the hotel is in plan check with the Health Department and Fire, and we expect them to be able to have a permit issued within a month. Doesn't mean they'll start within a month, but they could start right soon after that. So plan check is still moving forward with all, with the hotel. So we're really excited about those.
Stephen, is there any concerns about the construction at the hotel and the meetings going on simultaneously with our deal?
Yeah, there are, but most of the hotels, you know, the entrances on the hotel are on the sides. And then the, the widening is on Brigham and Drive, so we're expecting to be able to juggle this. What we may do is not allow any parking on Los Albe Boulevard right there, so the traffic lanes will go around any trenching we do in Los Albe Boulevard and continue those two moving lanes at all times. So that's our goal, and it's very feasible. The width is there to keep that going.
How long do the meetings take?
Three, three months, unless we hit something that is a surprise. Hopefully, there's no railroad tracks under there, you know, but you never know.
You never know.
Okay. Any other commissioner reports? Any comments or anything?
On Brigham and, how far does that widening go down?
Yeah.
Just to the...
You know, there's an industrial condo complex where Source Media is, that was done in 2006. They had actually, were supposed to widen Brigham and on their site. Instead, they paid us. We will use that money to now widen that, equal with what they're doing there. It's about four feet off.
It'll go all the way?
Um, it'll be about four feet off. Because the, we will remove the green space where the, the industrial park is, but not the sidewalk. So it still won't line up exactly, but about four feet.
But is, is this going to go the length of the street, all the way to the...
It'll go all the way to Reagan. Yeah. It'll jog a little between the, the industrial buildings and the hotel, but it will be widened there as well. The city will take the lead on that widening, using the money from Jason's dad?
Yeah, Jason Toomey.
Jason Toomey's dad's project. If you remember, that was the Toomey project years and years ago. And then the developer is responsible for the widening down to Los Albe Boulevard.
How can we wouldn't just go make a straight line and move the, too much would be too expensive?
The dedication at the time from the Toomeys wasn't wide enough. They had to dedicate that land to the city for future use, and we didn't ask for enough at the time. So can't go back and take land that they didn't give.
I'll just make a comment. I have a comment. With, just a comment. With respect to the, whatever the staff, the, you guys are, are coming up with, like, for a, trying to decide on what a definition of a bedroom or anything like that, in my, I think when it gets to something like that, I think that the commission ought to weigh in on that, if you're having difficulty with that. Because we end up having to make a decision on what we read in the code, and if you guys are coming up with, you know, what do we do? A bedroom isn't a, you know, what you were talking about. If there, if there's ambiguities there...
Interpretation.
I do, interpretations, I believe, you know, if we're going to be, if we have to deal with it, you know, I think we need to be maybe in the loop a little bit, so that, you know, you do a plain reading of the code and we get forced around a little bit.
We brought interpretations to you before, yeah.
I know.
It's not unusual.
I think we, we should do that. Also, one other thing, in, in the, the density, unit density, so just my opinion, I think we need to revisit that, okay? That's 1750, which is the, you know, it's just a number that's, if you do the math on that, that's a 20, that's about a 24, 25 percent, uh, 25, 25 unit per acre density, if you do the math on that, okay? Just categorically, for that whole area. That's what that works out to. Even though our code goes, allow it to go to 30, that's been 1750 since I, I can remember, I, my, 40 years ago, coming in here. That 1750 has been the number. And I'm of the opinion, just in general, that I don't care what the trend is, is to high-density, you know, development. We're seeing that in Cypress now, and there's a lot of, a lot of angst going on in Cypress over the quote "infill" and the high-density homes up there. Huntington Beach and Beach Boulevard and all down around the, that, down to Belatera, you know, that might be the flavor of the month in the, you know, in the planning arena, but it's, you know, I don't know. For here, I, I think we need to maybe look at, I would think, increasing that number and thus lowering the density, you know, that, to some number. We need to have a, a review, I think, and a meet, because we, yeah, we, we've got a few lots left, but I don't think we need to bury this, or, or actually encourage the demolition of some of these to come in with higher density. We already have, we have a finite amount of, of space for, for parking, and if we're not going to be kind of like, be following the code, like, I mean, strictly, then we got to do something with the density to, I think, to lower it. If that means taking that to 1850 or tweaking that number to where, where we would get larger and more friendly, they're not going to be jammed in there. You, you'd have a bigger space. That's, you know...
There's two ways to amend the code, passing a resolution, or waiting till we redo the whole code, which we just have accepted bids on. So there's two ways for you guys to do that.
Well, just... I would say, knowing what, it probably wouldn't be practical, because any changes that we make is not going to get, we won't get past the council if you're going to, they're, they're hiring somebody to go through and do what we did, and I don't know how they're going to...
But you, you have...
But whatever, but whatever. That's a whole different issue. There's no point in going, so, so I'm, I'm giving you my, I, I really think this is where a, we really ought to have a joint meeting with the city council to get on the same page for what we want this city to look like. Okay? If that comes in development, development standards and stuff like that, because it, you know, I, I think we need, I don't know if that's even appropriate, but we, we should, you know, get some input. We're the ones who live here. You know, the staff, the staff doesn't live here, the consultant they're going to bring in doesn't live here, and, and we got, we got to deal with the traffic. And, and, you know, the state has a, they're on a increased density, high-density bent right now, you know, statewide. It's why we've got accessory dwelling units and all of this stuff to contend with. I think we better try to maybe get ahead of the curve a little bit, or we're going to, you know...
Well, certainly, our, in the proposals that we sought for the zoning code, it has meetings and public meetings, and meetings where those bodies will be together studying the issues. So allows you to put, allows you to take that list that you've had for 20 years or so and fix those things that we think are broken or that are less great.
Well, I think...
It's a chance to put things in black and white for less interpretation. And with an experienced commission like we have now, there's no better time to do it than with your experience. If there's three new, three new ones, I would...
Well, I think, I think, I...
This is a great opportunity.
But I think, yeah... This has been brought up before. I, I really do believe that the council and the commission kind of need to get, at least have a, a similar vision. We, we need to know what the vision is. If that vision's coming from the council, then we need to know what it is, and we need to either get on board. If they don't have a vision, or we don't have a, a, an idea of what we deal with, we need to get together and talk about, you know, what do you want to do in the apartment area? You guys, they, they get the heat, they get a lot of the heat for people complaining about traffic and, and all this other stuff, too, and what they're doing. Well, all we're doing is exacerbating it. If we allow, if our code is out of date, and, and for where we are now, it's too high a density for what we want. Maybe not for what the state wants, but for what we want. And before the state comes in and we have to contend with the accessory dwelling and all that, maybe we need to make sure that we can scale it down a little bit, so, you know, we don't, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot. I think we need to do some work on that. That's my comment. So, with that...
Will we be looking at any of the, we looked about banners and stuff like that, are we going to be going back on that subject?
When the zoning code comes up, the entire section 17, and then also the subdivision section, would be brought to, will be reviewed, much in the same process that the general plan was done. Remember all the outreach we did with the general plan? And then the joint meetings of commissioners, getting a chance to vet with each other. You remember the 21 commissioners in one room? So it'll be that same process.[1745.54]